Call the meeting to order, call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Trustee Maloney?
Here.
Trustee Campus?
Here.
Trustee Reardon?
Here.
Trustee Radishewski?
Here.
Mayor Pecow?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, approval of the November 4 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to table the approval of the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of November 4, 2024. They were not included in our package.
Second. Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Next item, accounts, excuse me, any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
Anybody here to speak?
Okay. Accounts payable November 5, 2024 through November 18, 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve the accounts payable November 5, 2024 through November 18, 2024 in the amount of $5,397,012.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Shortest one ever. Item A, payroll for November 8, 2024. Approval. Item B, replacement of police vehicles, vehicles purchase proposal.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
Move to approve items A and B of the consent agenda.
Second. Call the roll. Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Orland Park Place re-subdivision.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Campus?
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action for Case Number 2024-0064, also known as Orland Park Place re-subdivision, and approve the platte of consolidation prepared by Walpert, Inc., dated October 9, 2024, and authorize staff to execute and record the platte.
Second.
Could you show us, I know it was approved unanimously from the Plan Commission, but could you show us what they're doing here?
Yeah, so this is kind of in preparation for future development. This is the existing boundary of the site. So this is consolidating a bunch of parcels and then also splitting off some parcels. So this is, oh geez. I'm confused by the orientation. Which way are we looking? The northwest corner, sorry. So they're breaking, this is an existing situation where they're letting one of them.
There's two lots and there's three buildings, yeah?
So that's one correction.
Well, so is that a correction? Is that what it is currently? Go back.
Sorry, go backwards. Help me out here, Kerry, because this is not.
Yeah, so the lighter blue lines are the existing boundaries, so they're creating lot one and lot two in the northwest corner of this overall Park Place area.
So the lighter boundaries, there's like two little ones and we're basically making two bigger ones, is that?
Um, probably three.
I'm looking at lighter boundary around the north building and then the second building from the north.
Yeah, so the two northwest buildings will be on one lot and then it's splitting off the lot, the building to the south on its own lot.
All right.
And then this one is, the northern one along 94th Avenue, looking to create a pad, a future pad site for future retailer or restaurant or that sort of thing.
That makes sense.
Yep. And then south of that, the other driveway, yeah, so.
There's parking, yep, okay.
And north is facing right on this to fit it all in and landscape, so, so the two lots along 94th and then the, are like along the bottom and then the two, and then the lots to the north, the upper right corner.
All right. Anybody have any questions about that? Makes sense, call the roll.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Ordinance platte of annexation, 11250, 151st Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Annoxing Property, Gus-11250 West, 151st Street.
Second.
And I know we've been working with Mr. Gus for a long time on this, so it makes sense. And that's what happens when people work with us on it. You get a, you know, you get it all resolved and get everything handled. So anybody have any comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Ordinance rental property registrations.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Radishewski?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title, Chapter 8, Rental Housing, Section 5-8-1-7 Regarding Rental Property Registrations.
Second.
And essentially, this ordinance is codifying what we talked about last week at the, or two weeks ago at the COW, correct?
Exactly. This ordinance was attached to the COW report also, so it's just the imputation of what we talked about.
Any other comments on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
Again, I just want to thank staff for all their hard work in putting this together and having different meetings with pretty much all of us to discuss what was going on. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Steve.
And same data, like I said, this is the best, I saw the background work and it's the best work I've seen since I've been here, so you can pass that on to her again.
Call the roll. Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? John Humphrey Drive at 143rd Street Intersection, Phase 2 Design Engineering Services, Patrick Engineering, Inc., Change Order Number 3 and Addendum C.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Reardon?
I move to approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number 3 and Addendum C to the professional service agreement dated June 24, 2022 with Patrick Engineering, Inc. of Lisle, Illinois, the John Humphrey Drive at 143rd Street Intersection, Phase 2 Design Engineering Service Project to increase the total not to exceed contract amount by the amount of $19,863 to $938,663 for the work outlined in the proposal dated November 13, 2024, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to a village attorney review.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Trustee Radishewski?
That, the amount, the spread from $19,863 to $938,000?
$938 is the main contract. The $19,000 is the change.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Yeah, big spread if it was the other way around.
Yeah, that didn't make sense to me.
A little too much leeway.
Any other questions?
Call the roll. Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Schussler Park turf field hours.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to approve adopting operational hours for the Schussler Park turf fields of 7:00 AM to sunset or until the conclusion of the last rental, seven days per week year round.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Reardon?
I don't really have a question about the proposal, which I agree with. I do want to thank Ray, his staff, and Chief and his staff for being adapting and communicating with not only the people who are renting it, the neighbors. I'm out there quite a bit with my kids and I know there's some growing pains, I'll call them, nothing too severe, but kids out there and doing different things, but it's being handled very well. A lot of communication between you guys, both of your staff, the parents and the organizations that are renting it. And I think, like you've both said to me, give it a little more time and everyone will fall into kind of a rhythm of how people are using Schussler Park. So I think this is another way of kind of establishing what the rules are and, you know, giving you guys some direction on how to enforce what we're doing out there. That's all.
Any other comments? So, just for clarification, Ray, so it's going to stay open as long as things are rented, but if it's dark, the lights go off and it's not open anymore? Is that basically the summary?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So the question I have for you, Chief, is it not being lit at night, is that going to present more problems for you with enforcement?
No, I don't think so.
Like, so I'm thinking about summer hours where, you know, well, summer's not as bad of a deal because it's eight o'clock, but say, like, like fall, right, where it starts to get dark at 6:30 and kids might still be playing on it or whatnot, and it goes dark.
Right. We have it under constant surveillance, so if we see something on there, we'll respond accordingly.
Mr. Mayor, and there's perimeter lighting even when it goes out, because I've been there when the lights are out. There's still, you can still see, you can still kind of get around the parking lot and things like that, so I don't, is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah, I think there's plenty of light there to still see what's going on.
And we, and we're communicating this to the neighborhood?
We haven't yet, but we will.
Okay. Did we, I mean, we have the ability to do surveys of the neighborhood. Do we do surveys of the neighborhood on it?
To turn the lights off at seven year round or to turn them off at sunset year round? We have not surveyed the neighborhood on that.
Well, obviously, the lights, we don't need them, we only need them after sunset.
Correct.
So we'd be turning the lights off after sunset when there's no play on those fields.
Right. We would keep the field closed when it's dark out. So kids can play until sunset and then after sunset, we would close and lock the field for the day.
Right, but that's what I'm asking. I'm asking, did we survey the neighborhood or get feedback from the neighborhood?
No, we met with the RIC advisory board to get their input and they did approve it.
Okay, any thoughts on the board, from the board here? Well, so let's, I mean, I'm okay with doing this, but if we hear a lot from the neighborhoods, we will have to, you know, think about revising. How much play do you see when it's not scheduled?
There's a lot of play when it's not scheduled. It's the, it's the play that happens after dark that we're worried about, so not so much.
That's, that's the, that's what I'm talking about. How much play after dark?
Scheduled play is fine, so, you know, we have the lights on, that's all scheduled.
After dark, non-scheduled play.
It's all the drop-in. Kids will be out there until 10, 10:30 at night. Kids are always out there. So if we check the cameras out periodically, check the cameras, you might have one kid, you might have a lot of kids out there. Kids are always on the field.
So there's a lot of play out there after?
In the dark, yeah.
No, after the last scheduled?
Yeah, there's, there's play constantly. So if there's a scheduled rental till, I don't know, six o'clock and it's summer, there's going to be dropping users after that.
Yeah, but that's light out. I'm talking about when it's dark.
When it's dark, there's still people dropping. I've seen people.
And there's nothing scheduled.
There's still people playing.
And the lights are on. How much play are we seeing out there?
We don't turn the lights on. So we only use the lights for scheduled play. So once the scheduled plays over, we turn the lights off.
Then this is no change from our current policy.
The park ordinance dictates that the park closes at nine o'clock, so kids are playing in the dark with the lights off.
Okay.
But we've seen some kids out there with glow in the dark balls.
I'm trying to get to the bottom of what we do currently. So currently, if there's no scheduled play and it's dark, the lights are off.
Correct.
So it's not like they've had lights on where they've been able to play.
That's correct.
The lights are off. What we're saying is if the lights are off and it's dark, you can't be there.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get at. I was trying to understand the.
Yeah, because, again, I've been there when this has happened and there's enough light, I'll call it, from like the parking lot and from other areas for people to try to continue to play. But I think the problem we're running into is they can get hurt, it's dark, we don't want them there when the lights aren't on and there's not, it's not being supervised.
I get it. I was just trying to get to the bottom of how it is currently before I vote. Okay, any other questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Avocado Theory Cafe Lease Agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Campus?
I move to approve entering into a three-year lease agreement with Avocado Theory commencing on January 1, 2025 and continuing through December 31, 2027 to provide fresh, healthy food and beverage products for the Orland Park Health and Fitness Center Grab and Go Cafe, paying the village 10% of gross sales and authorizes the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Romtech Change Order Number 1 and Addendum A.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
Move to approve and authorize the execution of Change Order Number 1 and Addendum A to the contract dated 4/15/2024 with Romtech for the Schussler Park restroom/storage facility to increase the total not to exceed contract cost by the amount of $5,407.06 to $324,463.89 for the additional items outlined in the proposal dated 6/3/2024, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Fit for Mom Stroller Strider Spring 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Reardon?
I move to approve adding stroller strider classes as a winter and spring 2025 Recreation and Parks Program class on a contractual basis with Fit for Mom contractor, in which the village won 30% of gross revenues, including the non-resident premium, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Studio AH LLC Architectural and Engineering Services for Historic Structures, Addendum D.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
Move to approve amending contract agreement with Studio AH LLC to update the legal name to Nurture to extend the contract completion deadline to December 31, 2025, and to remove Stellwagen Farm from the scope of work and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Call the roll. Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? A Resolution of the Village of Orland Park, Illinois condemning the selective and inconsistent actions of the Illinois State Comptroller against the Village of Orland Park, calling for fair and uniform application of compliance measures across all municipalities.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Campus?
I move to adopt a resolution entitled, A Resolution of the Village of Orland Park, Illinois condemning the selective and inconsistent actions of the Illinois State Comptroller against the Village of Orland Park, calling for fair and uniform application of compliance measures across all municipalities and units of government.
Second.
So I'm going to read this and I'll give, I know many of you may have something to say. Whereas the Village of Orland Park has long been committed to fulfilling its statutory obligations in financial reporting, has consistently cooperated in transparent and responsible manner with the Illinois State Comptroller's Office, and despite the Comptroller agreeing to a compliance plan for external units that the village has adhered to, the Illinois State Comptroller's Office recently imposed punitive sanctions on the Village of Orland Park by suspending offset payments due to delayed submission. And as reported in the Illinois Local Government Warehouse to Lincoln City report, a total of 361 units of government statewide have similarly outstanding financial reports from 2022 or earlier, including six units that have not submitted required reports for over a decade. Yet these entities have not faced similar punitive actions from the Comptroller's Office, highlighting a deeply concerning lack of consistency in enforcement. And the Comptroller's Office specifically singled out Orland Park in a public social media post concerning its reporting status while failing to mention the widespread delays affecting numerous other government units with similarly overdue reports, thereby creating a misleading impression that Orland Park was singularly non-compliant and deserving of punitive measures. And government units across Illinois, including Orland Park, face substantial and ongoing challenges in securing qualified auditors to complete external audits in a timely manner, a challenge acknowledged by the state of Illinois itself in meeting its own financial reporting obligations and timelines. And the Auditor General's reports have highlighted repeated material weaknesses and significant deficiencies in the state's internal controls, and further noted that the lack of timely financial reporting limits effective oversight of state finances, underscoring the obstacles both the state and local governments encounter in fulfilling rigorous reporting requirements. And a total of 587 units of government have outstanding financial reports for 2023. And reports from the Illinois Auditor General reveal that the state of Illinois has repeatedly failed to file its own comprehensive financial reports on time for multiple years. And the 2023 annual financial report for the state of Illinois has not been filed for a fiscal year that ended six months earlier than the Village of Orland Park. And the Comptroller's Office has stated that its office will continue to withhold village funds until the 2023 audit is filed. And Sean Morrison, chairman of the Cook County Republican Party, has raised significant concerns that the Comptroller's actions against the Village of Orland Park appear politically motivated, citing Orland Park's cooperation in submitting its audit and the unprecedented withholding of offset funds despite numerous other units of local government with delayed audits not facing similar penalties. And the Illinois Municipal League has also expressed its concern over the Comptroller's selective suspension of offset payments to the Village of Orland Park, emphasizing that these punitive measures unfairly penalize the community and urging the Comptroller's Office to consider leniency for municipalities making earnest efforts to meet compliance requirements. Now therefore, be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the Village of Orland Park, Cook and Will Counties, Illinois as follows. The Village of Orland Park expresses its strong condemnation of the selective actions taken by the Illinois State Comptroller's Office, which unfairly penalize Orland Park while ignoring municipalities and governmental units with more prolonged and severe compliance delays, raising concerns of politically motivated actions by the Comptroller's Office. And the Village of Orland Park formally calls upon the State Comptroller's Office to enforce compliance measures fairly and uniformly, applying them consistently across all municipalities and governments, government units in Illinois, thereby upholding the integrity of state and local government operations. And the Village of Orland Park demands the Illinois State Comptroller's Office rescind the decision to suspend offset payments important to Orland Park's community services, which serve the public's needs and well-being. And the Village of Orland Park strongly advocates for the Illinois State Comptroller's Office to support, rather than penalize municipalities facing barriers to compliance, including the prevalent shortage of qualified auditors and to prioritize constructive assistance for communities making documented efforts to fulfill their obligations. And the Village of Orland Park calls upon its state representatives and senators to take notice of the disproportionate treatment Orland Park has received and to address this issue, advocating for equitable and impartial enforcement of compliance measures statewide and supporting all government units in meeting reporting standards. Section 6, a copy of this resolution will be forwarded to the Office of the State Comptroller, the General Assembly, the Municipal League, Chairman Sean Morrison, and the state representatives and senators serving Orland Park, as well as other relevant entities, to emphasize the village's commitment to transparency, fairness, and responsible fiscal management. Have any comments from the board? Nothing? I've got just a few. Everyone here and many of the people watching are aware the Comptroller's decided to try to inflict harm on the people of Orland Park for her and her boss's political benefit. Currently, there are over 500 audits that are late for 2023, yet the Comptroller continues to single out Orland Park to damage our residents. In fact, the state's 2023 fiscal year ended six months before ours, and the Comptroller has not filed the audit for the state of Illinois. She is six months behind us and has the audacity to take money from Orland Park residents. These actions are capricious and they're unacceptable. She should immediately release our residents' money. Additionally, the state of Illinois legislature needs to fulfill its oversight responsibility and take legislative action to stop the Comptroller from taking these abusive actions against any other municipality in the future, as their goal is to help people comply and to work with municipalities, not penalize them. Thank you. Call the roll.
Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow? Village Hall Department Furniture.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Campus?
Move to waive competitive bidding in lieu of entry into a contract through the Amnia Partners Public Sector Purchasing Cooperative, number R191804, with Midwest Office Interiors of Woodridge, Illinois, in the amount of $78,604.86 for the purchase of office furniture, and authorize village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Any comments?
Call the roll. Trustee Campus?
Aye.
Trustee Reardon?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pecow?
Aye.
Any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village
Anybody here to speak? All right. Board comments, trustee campus.
Good evening. I suspect I might stop a little bit on trustee Maloney's comments, so I'll apologize in advance, but I think that this program is worthy of multiple people saying the same thing and commending them for it. So as I reflect on the successes So as I reflect on the successes and accomplishments within our village, I want to take a moment to highlight the incredible work being done by our Special Recreation Division and its dedicated leaders, Nick Harvey and Justin Banks. Nick Harvey, the division supervisor for Special Recreation, exemplifies what it means to lead with passion and expertise. His unwavering commitment to the participants and families of Special Recreation goes beyond simply managing the division. Nick directly provides services that make a profound impact, bringing enthusiasm, patience, and a unique skill set to his role. His work ensures that every participant experiences growth, joy, and connection, and you don't have to spend long with these athletes to know just how much they love Nick. Justin Banks, who leads OWLS Athletics and Special Olympics competitions, demonstrates exceptional leadership. His efforts create opportunities for OWLS athletes to achieve greatness, both on and off the field. These achievements bring immense pride not only to the athletes themselves, but also to their families and their community. This past weekend, the OWLS showcased their hard work and determination by taking first place in the state floor hockey tournament. Michaela Trail, the team's head coach, played a pivotal role in this victory. Michaela's leadership extended beyond strategy and performance. She set an inspiring example of fairness and integrity. Her advocacy during a critical moment of the tournament earned admiration from both her team and competitors. A coach from the opposing team even shared heartfelt praise for Michaela, commending her poise, sportsmanship, and her embodiment of the values that make Special Olympics events so meaningful. The email that we received from Jordan Chandler, a fellow coach, beautifully captures the impact of Michaela's leadership and the positive atmosphere fostered by our Special Recreation team. It is a testament to the culture of inclusion, respect, and excellence that Nick, Justin, Michaela, and their entire team have built. Thank you all. I'd also like to add that attending the awards dinner each year for these incredible athletes is truly one of my favorite events. Seeing the athletes' joy and the camaraderie they share is heartwarming. I wish everyone could witness how much they know and enjoy speaking with Mayor Pico. Those moments are truly for me unforgettable and a testament to the sense and community fostered here in Orland Park. And of course, the dance floor fills up almost instantly with the smiling faces, creating an atmosphere of pure joy and celebration. Lastly, I want to thank Recreation Director Ray Pietroni for bringing this recognition forward and for leading a department that continues to elevate the quality of life here at Orland Park. Let's take pride in these efforts and celebrate the extraordinary contributions of our Special Recreation Division. Thank you all for your dedication to creating an environment where everyone can thrive. Thank you.
Trustee Malani.
What he said.
I guess I'll start going to you first.
No, I mean, honestly, I mean, Nick and Justin run a fantastic program, and we can't do it without all the staff and all of the coaches. And I didn't have any notes for this, but, you know, I think the event is amazing every year. The joy in the participants' hearts and smiles ear to ear the entire time they're there shows what this program is all about. It's not about the people that are running it as much as they deserve recognition, it's about the happiness that's in that room. So I appreciate everything you guys do for those participants and all of the athletes. They do a lot of work. I mean, there are people that have been doing, what is the longest-running athlete we have? He's been doing this.
He was at the first Special Olympics event at Soldier Field in the sixties.
So since the sixties, and he still comes to everybody. And that's dedication, and that's just proving what a great job you guys do. So thank you with that. Just also, the tree lighting on December first and the parade, hope to see you guys out there as well. And there's also a public safety forum, December fourth, from seven to eight-thirty here in the village hall. So look forward to seeing everybody, and have a great night.
Trustee Katsinas.
I'd like to say same as well. It was a magical night for those kids. It's just an incredible experience, and to Trustee Compass's comment, it truly is the highlight of the year to see the joy in the kids and their parents' face. Seeing how he took my public safety forum.
Would you like to barf?
Yeah, no, that's all right. The Orland Park Lions Club, it's a wonderful organization that helps the community. They're having their annual Christmas tree and wreath sale in the Village of Orland Park's parking lot, November fifteenth, they start to December twenty-third, or until the trees sell out. So they do a great job. Hopefully, we can support them. Thank you.
Trustee Radiszewski.
What they said, I second it. I also want to say thank you to everybody. So this is kind of like the time of the year, Thanksgiving is right around the corner. This past weekend, I had a Friendsgiving, if you will, so like an early Thanksgiving celebration with some family that happened to be in town and some friends that had stopped by. And so I'm kind of like in that mood, I guess, already, so I want to just say thank you to the board, thank you to everybody who, you know, all of us who serve, and, you know, sometimes we're faced with some scrutiny and just negativity, and it's just completely unfounded, but, you know, we show up, we, you know, we vote our conscience, we do what's right, we do what's best for the Village of Orland Park, and we do what's best for the citizens. And I also want to thank all the directors and staff for showing up and for everything that you do, and so not calling out anybody individually, but collectively, I just want to say thank you. Thank you all very much. That's it.
Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor, today I received an email, which I thought was pretty hilarious, and I thought it had to do with using AI to interpret our financial statements. And I showed it to some other auditing professionals at our firm, and we had the biggest laughs while reading through this. It was pretty funny. I mean, and how people can take it seriously is beyond me, but, you know, but after laughing about it, you realize, well, it's wasting time. That's what people, that's what some of these things are about, wasting our time on the board, wasting lawyers, wasting this, and it costs, eventually in the long run, it does cost money. But that's not going to stop me from laughing at it. It's pretty pathetic that it's also lined up with, for political purposes, other parties, you know, endorse the same ideas. It's just, it's just beyond the pale. So anyway, I just wanted to share my laughter with that, and the other thing, the only other thing I know is that there's supposed to be a Pulitzer Prize winner speaking at the library tomorrow. I hope everybody can make it. Thank you.
His last name wouldn't be Healy, would it?
Not me. I'm not speaking.
Trustee Reardon.
Thank you. Yeah, I echo the comments about the rec board. I'm involved in Special Olympics in Chicago. Actually, I'm going to a big fundraiser on Wednesday night, and I think it's just a great job what we do there, and it's not just our residents, I think the whole area benefits from that. And to see the, to see the parents and sometimes the siblings of these athletes is just so heartwarming, because I have some family that are involved in some of these things, and to have that outlet for them, for those participation, for those parents raising, you know, some of these are adults, you know, they're in age, and so they're participating in that, and this is a relief for them to be able to have these programs. So great job, as always, taking off a little bit what Bill said, we're getting into silly season, it's going to be like this, I think, for a while, but what I think people need to, you know, focus on, and I think the mayor put out his mayoral video about the audit, you're going to hear so much misinformation about the audit. What is very clear, and somebody can quote this and hopefully replay it, zero missing money and zero misuse of money. I mean, there were issues, there were issues with auditors, and the mayor explained it very concisely about why we were in the position we were. But all the way through the entire audit, whether you use AI, whether you have another political candidate analyze it, whatever you want to do, there is no missing money, and there was no misuse of money. There were auditing issues, we had some departmental issues, which we recognized immediately, and what I loved, what our auditor, our current auditor said, is that before we even filed, those were all have been fixed. Internally, our department, our people have worked very hard to fix all of those. We have new people in place, new process in place. So again, no missing money, no misuse of money at all. So anything else you hear is complete fodder, and, you know, somebody trying to cause a problem. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hopefully, you don't have to watch the Bears lose again heartbreakingly. Try to shop, try to shop local, I know the big deals are online on that Friday afterwards, but get out to some of our stores here in Orland Park, eat locally. If you have family in town, bring them around, we got some, you know, great old places, great family places, but we got a lot of new places over the last year or two as well, so please try to shop local as well. Thanks.
Thank you. So there's not a whole lot to comment on from the last few weeks, but I was really happy to attend the grand openings at Wild Fork on the Grange and Roses and Kebab at Harlem. And of course, the highlight of every year is the Special Rec Awards Dinner, which is fantastic. And, you know, yeah, it's getting into silly season, and if you listen to what you've heard, is that I think I'm the most notorious criminal in Illinois since Al Capone, and that there's been nothing that we've done right. And I think you've heard me on this board many times say, talk about public safety, and, you know, that all the boards prior to us supported public safety, and then that's one of the reasons why, since I've been mayor, we, you know, the last six years, the lowest we've had in the last thirty-one is because it was already built, and we just made it better. Special Rec, same thing, I don't even know when it started, but it was here before I got here. And, you know, when it started? So I don't even know how far back it goes, but it's fantastic, it's a fantastic program, and we're making it better. We're adding an all-abilities playground to Schuschler Park next year, so I can thank the boards previously, because I can actually, you know, not everything people did before is wrong. There's a lot of stuff that wasn't good, but there's things that were good too, so we can acknowledge that. The last week was full of events for veterans, a cause that, as you all know, is near and dear to my heart. I want to thank Carl Sandberg High School, my alma mater, for hosting us veterans at an appreciation event. I also want to thank Jolene Junior High for specifically inviting me to a spaghetti dinner on Veterans Day. I was also proud to speak at our veterans ceremony for the eighth time, and later that day, we broke ground on our new veterans building and our new Vietnam Memorial in front of the building. I encourage everyone to swing by and take a look at that. It's beautiful, and I think the mockups are still there. It's not quite, it's going to be, what, about another week till it's complete, but if you went there now, it still looks the same, other than the posts are going to be different. So it's really well done, so thank you, Joel, and thanks to the team for getting that all moved and doing a great job with that. My last event for the week was to speak at the Medal of Honor event at Carl Sandberg High School. The Medal of Honor bus, the Valor Express, went to Andrew and Sandberg the week before the event on Saturday, and over nine hundred and sixty young ladies and young men were able to learn about the Congressional Medal of Honor, and I heard nothing but positive comments from the gentleman who put this on for them. I want to thank both Andrew Sandberg and District Two Thirty for hosting those events. And given it's silly season, people always ask me why I do this, given the garbage lies attacks on my family, and I've been dealing with a lot of them, I believe. It's because I know I make a difference, and I do enjoy building on Orland Park's strengths and making it better for the future. That's what we're all trying to do here. But I also love weeks like last week and having a platform as mayor to talk about issues that are important to me and others. So while I didn't have a lot to talk about, I'm still going to talk about something. Tonight, I'm going to use this platform to repeat the comments I made Saturday at the Medal of Honor event. I have over forty-five combat sorties, and I'm fortunate that I lost no friends during those missions. I'm also lucky that flying the F-15E in combat is not up close and personal, and it's not hand-to-hand. Two of the people I am closest to in the entire world, who were both naval officers, wouldn't have expected to see carnage up close and personal either, but they did. My first cousin, who's the same age as me, was on the USS Iowa when it exploded, forty-seven crew members were killed. It was horrific for him to be standing at the door by the turret when the captain ordered the door sealed, which killed everyone inside, but saved the rest of the ship. He was just twenty-four years old at the time, twenty-three. My best friend that I grew up with here in Orland Park was a Navy Seabee and was activated and sent to Iraq to oversee reconstruction. On his last day of a one-year tour, his Humvee was hit by an IED. He was lucky, he lived and suffered bruises and cuts, but he tells the story of helping to keep two members of his protection detail alive from the horrible injuries they suffered. These are two of my best friends in the entire world that I still talk to on a weekly basis, but even though those incidents are decades old, what I just told you is all that I know about those incidents. They don't talk about them to me, and I don't ask. But I also know that they have both dealt with those issues in their own way by speaking to those people who they needed to speak to. However, too many of our soldiers don't talk to anyone about the mental anguish they've been experiencing. Suicide rates for veterans are nearly double that the rest of the population. This is a preventable national tragedy. Please, if you know anybody that you think is suffering, please encourage them to talk to someone, to anyone. All of these veterans are heroes, regardless of whether they receive medals for it or not. All of them and all of us who served took an oath of office that included the following: I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion. Everyone, whether they were a volunteer or a draftee, took this oath and made a decision to serve, fight, and potentially die for our country. At that time, most of us would say that we were doing all this for our country. However, I can tell you, when the shooting starts and you're in combat, anyone who tells you that they're fighting for their country is not telling you the truth. The thought of fighting for your country never comes to mind. You might be fighting to see your family again, but you are definitely fighting for the man or woman next to you, and certainly, you are fighting to survive. I can also assure you that nobody is thinking about earning medals either. They are trying to get to the next day. But sometimes our soldiers are presented with challenges that push them to the limits of human endurance, strength, character, and courage, that thankfully few of us ever experience. To date, three thousand five hundred and nineteen Americans who have served in the United States military have faced these challenges head-on and, for their actions, received the Congressional Medal of Honor. Over half of those who have received the Medal of Honor died from the actions that earned it. The heroism of those who earned the Medal of Honor is unparalleled. We were honored to host the Valor Express here in Orland and to have given our residents a chance to learn more about the Congressional Medal of Honor and those who have received it. I thought the retired United, that retired United States Air Force Colonel Michael Coleman, who knows most of the living Medal of Honor winners, said it very well. They are all ordinary people who were put in situations where courage met circumstance. The lesson learned here is, all of us are capable of the extraordinary, provided we have the courage and perseverance to meet the challenges we face. Thank you for listening to that repeat of what I said the other day, and please enjoy your Thanksgiving. I hope to see you at the Turkey Trot Thanksgiving Day, the Christmas tree lighting and holiday parade on December first, and the public safety meeting, which has been moved to December fourth, it's no longer on December third, and it's going to be right here in this boardroom. So I hope to see you there. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Call or roll.
Second.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Regent.